Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council's special meeting and regular workshop. The council thanks you for being part of the city government. At special meetings, the council takes formal action on specific items and during the workshops only discusses issues with no formal action taken. Agenda packets are available on the Pasco, City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-dashwater.gov/agenda. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Resilient and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and the go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And this evening, we will be conducting some interviews. We have council member Serrano online, is that correct?
Yes ma'am.
And with that, can I get roll call? Councilmember Campos.
Present.
Milney. Roach. I thought he was on that, okay. Maloney. Barajas. At the moment, we only have three, so we don't have a quorum at the moment. Okay, we have councilmember Milney. We now currently have four present, we have a quorum, Ms. Mayor. Thank you for that. And with quorum, can we please, can you please join us for the pledge of allegiance? Is that you, councilmember Serrano?
This is councilmember Serrano, can you hear me?
Perfect, thank you, yes. So this evening, like I mentioned a little bit before, we will be conducting interviews. There's four individuals that have been selected. Well, so it's really up to you if you wish to stay and hear out the questions, but we do have deputy city manager to step out with the other candidates as we do the interviews per candidate. Okay. So at this point, we'll interview Soulema Abastillas and the other candidates if you'd like to step out with our deputy city manager. Thank you for that. So, good evening, thank you for applying and showing your interest in the community. At this point, we'll all take turns asking you a couple of questions. If at any point you feel we need to stop, repeat, just let us know.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll start with the first two questions. Question number one, the demands of a council member extend beyond attending regularly scheduled meetings and city-related activities. For example, council members often participate on local and regional boards. Okay, are you available to attend the regularly scheduled city council meetings generally occurring the first four Mondays of each month?
Yes.
And that's a two-part, so part B, are there any conflicts that might preclude you from attending evening or daytime meetings during the week other than city council meetings?
During the evenings, I could attend, there shouldn't be any conflicts. During the day, I am a teacher, and so during the summer, I'm free, I'm available to go, but during the summer, during the school year, I feel like with advance notice, I could figure out a way to be able to make it to those day meetings if necessary.
Thank you for that. My second question, as a city council member, you would be bound by the conflict of interest and appearance of fairness doctrines. Do you or others in your household have any financial interest in any contract with the city?
No.
Do you have any relatives employed by the city?
Yes.
Okay, do you or any, any, do you or anyone you are related to currently have a land use matter pending with the city?
No.
Thank you for that, councilmembers. Mayor Pretamaloney, if you'd like to go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, and thank you so much for applying for this position and coming down to chat with us tonight.
Thank you for having me.
So my question is, so if appointed, you'll be asked to swear an oath of office for a council member and confirm that you will support the Constitution of the US, of the United States of America, the Constitution of laws of Washington State, and all local ordinances. What does that mean to you and are you willing to commit to that even if you disagree with a state or federal law?
We have the country we have because of our constitution, and in order to, the laws need to correlate to what the constitution has, and so I would make sure to use that as a platform to make, as I'm going through it and saying, okay. And if I disagree, then I would find a way to, like I said, it is part of what our state is, what our country is, what we have in regard to our laws, so I would make sure to maybe see fine ways to be able to make that correlate and work together.
Thank you.
Councilman Mel.
Again, thank you for coming down here, I know it's not always easy to be in front of people and answer questions. So my question to you is, how would you handle a citizen contacting you with concerns about the actions of a city employee and/or a policy decision of the city council?
First and foremost, I would hear what, and be able to try to understand what the problem is and find ways that I could help them, but I would ask them to speak to their direct supervisor or their boss because I could hear what they have and I could understand, be understanding, but overall, their supervisor is the one that has the final say in what happens in that situation.
Would you have any, also on a policy decision of the city council, any thoughts on that? Or, I'm not holding you to it, but if you had a, basically if you had a citizen contacting you and they were very, let's say, about a policy decision of the city council, do you have any thoughts on that one as well?
It would be something that we would, maybe I would come to the city council and say, hey, we have the situation with this, they're disagreeing, or talk to them. Once again, it's that whole listening to them, trying to understand where they're coming from, and finding ways to help resolve the problem.
I love it, thank you.
Councilman Campos, I was a non-speaker, sorry.
Thanks for coming down, as a recent appointee, I know what it feels like to be on that side of the podium, it's nerve-wracking, so take your time, think about what we're asking, and we'll go from there. What special skills or insights do you believe you could bring to city council and what sets you apart from the other candidates?
I'm a special education teacher, and so I'm constantly collaborating with the parents, I'm emailing, calling them, I'm having meetings with them, I'm collaborating with the staff members, the teachers, the students that I work with, and then with administration. And so that fact that I'm, we're in meetings all the time, we're working together for the sake of the students and finding the best ways to support the student, and then also, I had another thought that went with that, oh, problem solving. Solve that problem, problem solving, I, that's pretty much my job, trying to find ways to help the students to the problems they may be having and be able to work with them in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have another question? Councilman Serrano, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. As everyone said, we appreciate you taking your time, Mrs. Abastillas for coming down and visiting with us tonight. I'd like to know what piqued your interest in applying to this and why you feel you'd be an asset to this council?
I became a teacher to help students, to help work with them, make, what am I wearing here? Help with them and their learning and everything and make it easier for them through school. Once I was a teacher, I saw the need for special education and how many, you know, there wasn't a lot of teachers for that, and so I went back to school, got my master's degree in special education in order to be able to fill that need. As a council member, I feel that it would give me the opportunity to not just work with the kids and helping them, but it gave me an opportunity, a platform to work with the adults, the parents, and being able to help them with it. They come with me, they come to me with problems that they may be having, or it would give me better resources that I could be able to help them and ways for me to be able to help them as a council member.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, and just gonna check, do we have Councilwoman Roach online? No. Okay. Looks like no further questions. Thank you, and we'll invite you if you want to stay, but we'll bring in our next candidate.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Next on. Ms. Abastillas, I am so sorry, this is my first time doing this interview. Do you have any questions for the council?
Actually, I don't, but thank you for asking.
Thank you for that. Next on the list is Mr. Irving Brown Senior. Good evening, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
We're good. So here's the process, we're gonna ask you, we're taking turns to ask you some questions. We have Councilman Serrano online, he'll also be asking you some questions. I have a couple for you to start off, and they're two or three-part questions. Number one, the demands of a council member extend beyond attending regularly scheduled meetings and city-related activities. For example, council members often participate on local and regional boards. Are you available to attend the regularly scheduled city council meetings generally occurring the first four Mondays of each month?
I am.
Second part, are you, I'm sorry, are there any conflicts that might preclude you from attending evening or daytime meetings during the week other than city council meetings?
No.
Question number two, this is a three-part, as a city council member, you would be bound by the conflict of interest and appearance of fairness doctrines. Do you or any others in your household have any financial interest in any contract with the city?
No.
Do you have any relatives employed by the city?
I do not.
Do you or anyone you are related to currently have a land use matter pending with the city?
No.
Thank you, Mayor Pretamaloney.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, and thank you for coming down. We know how nerve-wracking this can be, so we've all been in your shoes, I think, standing on that side of the podium one time or another.
Surely different.
So, thank you for coming down. So my question for you is, if appointed, you'll be asked to swear or affirm an oath of office for a council member and that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington, and all local ordinances. What does that mean to you and are you willing to commit to follow that even if you disagree with a state or federal law?
What does it mean to me? It's commitment, it's a promise, it's a keepsake that should be honored on the ethical scale. Our constituents are looking to us as somewhat of a beacon of hope and trust and commitment and follow-through, and that oath speaks of all of that. So I hold it dear to me, it's a promise to my city that I will do exactly what they expect me to do.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Councilman Amel.
Thank you for coming down here, we do appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
Very sharp, I like that suit a lot.
You said interviews, I tried to bring my game here.
Looks good. So how would you handle a citizen contacting you with concerns about the actions of a city employee?
Of a city employee? That would take some conversation, but not much engagement. There would be a great redirect happening there, there's a protocol in place for that, and there will be redirected respectfully, and responding to that would be no response.
Okay, and my second part of the questions, how would you handle a citizen contacting you with concerns about the actions, about a policy decision of the city council?
Again, I think I would hear it out, absolutely, take great notes, and I would get back with the council and have this discussion, and then move from that point on. It could be many segments to that, especially when those constituents can be your neighbor. So that conversation is kind of a loaded question, but again, respectfully and respecting them and their passion for what they're bringing up, is to bring that back to council and have a roundtable and then give them a fair response in a reasonable amount of time.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that. Councilman Campos.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, for coming down here, appreciate you showing up, like Milney said, you do look very sharp.
Appreciate it, thank you.
So my question, what special skills or insights do you believe you could bring to city council and what sets you apart from the other candidates?
There's a variety to me that I even enjoy, especially in my profession in human resources field. There's policies, there's guidelines, there's wonderful, great communication to get to the finish line. I bring those along with me, along with policies, procedures, as I mentioned, along with me, and then the level of communication is just really huge. I think communication is very important, if you can create a conversation, there's a great chance that there's a win at the end for both sides of the table, so high-level communication. Strategic planning, it's been something a part of me for many, many years, I love that. So policies, procedures is definitely a strong suit of mine, and I look forward to sharing that with not only you all, but with the City of Pasco if chosen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Serrano.
Thank you, and thank you for coming down, Mr. Brown.
You're welcome.
Oh, sorry, we had a bit of a delay there. So what piqued your interest, and this is kind of a variation of the same question Mr. Campos asked, but why do you believe you will benefit this city council?
One, funny aspect to it, I have a lot to say, on not only behalf of District Three, but I believe the communities within the community. There's, there's hope to have a representative that will come and deliver a clear, clean-cut message of the wants, the needs, and concerns of our Pasco families, and I believe I have the capability to bring that message back and write the vision and make it plain. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, no further questions, thank you for your responses, do you have any questions for the council?
I do not.
You do not? Okay, so same as a candidate before you, you're welcome to sit and listen to the rest of the interviews, or you can step out, it's up to you.
I'll relax in the gallery, thank you.
Thank you, and next candidate is Ryan Jones. Welcome, right up here. How are you?
I'm wonderful, how are you?
Doing well. First of all, thank you for your interest in participating and giving back to the community. We'll take turns asking you questions, we do have Councilmember Serrano online, so he also has some questions for you, and my questions are two and three-part. So, question number one, the demands of a council member extend beyond attending regularly scheduled meetings and city-related activities. For example, council members often participate on local and regional boards. Question, are you available to attend the regularly scheduled city council meetings generally occurring the first four Mondays of each month?
I am.
Thank you, are there any conflicts that might preclude you from attending evening or daytime meetings during the week other than city council meetings?
I am unavailable to attend any meetings during the day, Monday through Thursday, for my job that I do, but I'm available at nighttime.
Nighttime, so what would be your best time?
I get off work at 4:30, I get back to town at 5 o'clock.
So anything after 5:00? Sounds good, thank you. Second question, as a city council member, you would be bound by the conflict of interest and appearance of fairness doctrines. Do you or others in your household have any financial interest in any contract with the city?
No ma'am.
Do you have any relatives employed by the city?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, do you or anyone you are related to currently have a land use matter pending with the city?
No.
Thank you for that, and Mayor Pretamaloney.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, and thank you for coming down. You know, I think we've all been on that side of the podium and felt the pressures of this sort of process before in some form or fashion, so we absolutely understand, so please just answer your best abilities and feel free to follow up if there's any questions that we asked that aren't fully clear. All right, so my question to you is, if appointed, you will be asked to swear or affirm an oath of office for council member in that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington, and all local ordinances. What does that mean to you and are you willing to commit even if you disagree with a state or federal law?
Oh, what that means to me is, I've been a, I've lived in Pasco for 16 years, and I want Pasco to, I plan to live here for quite some time. I have three boys that attend school and we are raising them in Pasco. I want it to be the best place it can be, not just for my family, but for everybody. And, did I miss part of the question?
So I'll ask this, just a brief follow-up, so if you were to, so as part of the oath of office is you're swearing to follow the Constitution and the laws. If you, what would you do if you disagreed with a state or federal law? How would you, how would you personally disagree with it, how would you approach that situation?
It's still a law, there's laws that everybody don't like, that we still have to follow them, and I would, I would still follow the laws that we have to.
All right, appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mel.
Thank you, Mayor, I do appreciate it. So my question to you, and again, thanks you for coming out, we always appreciate people's interest in these council positions. So my question is, how would you handle a citizen contacting you with concerns about the actions of a city employee?
I would bring the concern to the council or to the employee, and I would bubble it up, I guess is what we call it in the trades. Don't be the last person to know, raise all the awareness to everybody.
And then my follow-up question is, how would you handle a citizen contacting you with concerns about a policy decision of the city council?
I would ask them to come to the council meetings and express their concerns with it.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you for that, Councilman Campos.
Thanks, Mr. Jones, for coming down. What special skills or insights do you believe you could bring to a city council and what sets you apart from the other candidates?
So I've been a pipe fitter for 15 years, I've been in many different leadership positions. I've been on the executive board for our local union for the last six years. I have been foreman, general foreman, job steward, sometimes representing up to 50 different members as a leader, not only to get the job done, but also to support and be there for all the other union workers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Serrano.
Thank you, and thank you for coming down, Mr. Jones. Before I get my question, John, I've lost my video, I still have audio, I don't know if there's something that has me showing as pending, so if that can be adjusted from your side, great, if not, I'm still good to go forward. But Mr. Jones, what piqued your interest in this position and why do you feel or believe you will be a great benefit to the city council?
Actually, what piqued my interest was, I've been wanting to get more involved in politics, and our government affairs director of Local 598 got ahold of me and talked to me about it, I did a bunch of research, and that's actually how I, what piqued my interest in it was him reaching out to me.
Thank you, and then the second, and it's kind of a tale from Mr. Campos's question, but why do you feel you'll be a benefit to this council, or believe you'll be a benefit to this council?
I guess I don't want to say the same thing again, but I feel like I'll bring great leadership and trust to the council and the city.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, do you have any questions for the council?
I do not.
You do not, thank you. Well, you're welcome to sit and listen to the rest of the candidates being interviewed, or if it's up to you, if you'd like to step out and then come back after executive session.
Okay.
Again, you're welcome to stay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And then our last candidate, Mariana Poliak?
Good evening, council.
Good evening, welcome. First of all, thank you for applying, showing an interest in your community. We're all taking turns asking you some questions, we do have Councilman Serrano online, he will also be asking you some questions. And then after that, if you have any questions or if you wish us to stop and repeat the question, please let us know.
Okay, thank you.
I do have two questions for you, and they're two and three-part questions. The demands of a council member extend beyond attending regularly scheduled meetings and city-related activities. For example, council members often participate on local and regular boards. Are you available to attend the regularly scheduled city council meetings generally occurring the first four Mondays of each month?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, are there any conflicts that might preclude you from attending evening or daytime meetings during the week other than? other than city council meetings?
I work during the day, so if I had, um, enough notice in advance, I could probably make some of the daytime meetings too, but the night ones are no problem.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Uh, my second question, as a city council member, you would be bound by the conflict of interest and appearance of fairness doctrines. Do you or others in your household have any financial interest in any contract with the city?
No.
Do you have any relatives employed by the city?
No.
Do you or anyone you are related to currently have a land use matter pending with the city?
No.
Thank you for that. Mayor Ferter Maloney.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Barrahas, and thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
We, I think we've all been on that side of the podium, talking up, and it's, um, we, we know how stressful that can be, so. So don't worry, just please answer questions your best to your ability, and, and I promise everything's gonna be fine. We, we understand, we understand the stresses, um, that come with this.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for coming down. So my question for you is, if appointed, you will be asked to swear or affirm an oath of office for council member, um, that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington, and all local ordinances. What does that mean to you? And would you be willing to, um, what would you do if you disagree with a state or a federal law?
Okay.
And I can ask that second part again in a second if you want, to the first part of, what does that mean to you?
Thank you for that question. It, it means a lot to me. I actually, um, brought a copy of the Constitution, and I have one in my office as well. I think this country is built on individual rights, um, that are granted to us by a creator and protected by the U.S. Constitution. And I feel like, um, it's, it's everything to, to protect it. It's been attacked, um, recently, and I feel like as long as this country upholds the Constitution, um, it's gonna do great. So to me, it, um, absolutely is a very, very important, um, part of what this country is all about. Um, so yeah. Um, and so if, for the second part of your question, if there's a law that's, that doesn't agree with it, I mean, this is the, the supreme law of the land, is the Constitution. Just comes back to this. So, um, I would always go back to this over anything else.
So as, as a, I guess to be more specific, um, I'm not a lawyer, so I won't try to understand whether state or law applies. That's, that's what courts get to do, is figure out whether it applies to the Constitution. But if, if you had disagreed with a state or, uh, federal law, how would, how would you respond as a council member if appointed?
Um, if I disagreed, I would, I would state why and, and again, go back to the Constitution and where, where does it not, um, connect? You know, how does it, how does it not fit into the Constitution? How does it go against it if, if it feel that it does?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Mel.
Thank you, Mayor Barrahas. I do appreciate. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Pleasure when people are wanting to be engaged with the city. My question to you is, how would you handle a citizen contacting you with concerns about the actions of a city employee?
I would just, um, I think most, uh, concerns are best solved with the person you have a concern with. So, um, if they have a concern with somebody, I would suggest that they would bring it up to the person they have a concern with, um, and try to resolve it that way. You know, if, if they have an issue with somebody, go, go talk to the person you have an issue with instead of myself and just kind of hear them out and, and thank them for their comments and, and suggest that they bring their concerns to the person they have an issue with.
Okay. And my second part of the question is, how would you handle a citizen contacting you with concerns about a policy decision of the city council?
I would thank them for their concern and let them know. I would bring it to the council and, and we can discuss it all together.
Okay. I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, Councilmember Campos.
Thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
Jump right into my question. What special skills or insights do you believe you could bring to the city council? And what sets you apart from the other candidates?
Um, I feel like my education and my experience, um, would, would help me with this position as well as, um, people close to me have told me that I have good discernment skills and common sense. So, um, I feel like, you know, if, if you have the right, um, attitude to, to serve your community and, and you bring in common sense into that, um, and do what's, what you're, I'm, I feel like I'm there to represent my, my people in my district. And so if I'm doing that to the best of my ability, that, that's kind of what I have to offer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Serrano.
Thank you, and, and thank you for coming down tonight. Um, just a quick question, kind of two-parter. What piqued your interest in applying for this position, and why do you feel or believe you'll be a benefit to this council?
It's a good question. Thank you. Um, probably because, um, you know, a lot of times when issues arise, it's, uh, people talk about different issues going on and, and with friends trying to talk about solving, how would I solve this or that, you know, and instead of sitting and talking about issues i- in my kitchen, I figured I, I need to do something about it and, and put some action behind, you know, just talking and ideas. So that's kind of what sparked my interest. And I'm sorry, what was the second part?
Why do you, uh, feel or believe you'll be a, a benefit to this council?
I feel like, um, I love the city of Pasco. I've moved here in nineteen ninety-two. I love this community and, um, have my roots in this community. And I feel like, um, it would be an honor to get to represent them.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you for your responses. Do you have any questions for the council?
I don't know. I, um, not, not at this moment. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you. And, um, with all, yes?
Madam Mayor, uh, we do need to, uh, based on the answer of, uh, one of the candidates, Ms. Evastias, uh, uh, it's my recommendation that we go back and follow up on that, uh, with regard to the answer of yes, uh, when asked about a relative, uh, employed with the city. So I'd just like to give her an opportunity to ex- explain that relationship.
Thank you. If you'd like to step forward. And I know I skipped over her explanation. Wasn't sure if I was supposed to go in, in depth. But, um, when asked, um, in my question, this, um, when asked if you have any relatives employed by the city, if you'd like to elaborate on that for the record, please.
Uh, yes. I was kind of hoping for a redo. Do you think I can do that too while we're up here? Uh, yes, my husband's a police officer for the city of Pasco.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And my only other follow-up question, uh, and feel free, you, uh, you don't feel, uh, any obligation to respond it or, uh, to have to, uh, respond if you don't want to, but, uh, is there, uh, do you and your husband have a separate property agreement, uh, as part of, um, between yourselves that you're aware of? Okay, great. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Uh, thank you, Ms. Evastias. You may have a seat. Um, at this point, um, the council will deliberate for about fifteen minutes. Um, we'll return here at, um, six fifty-six, fifty-seven. Um, so let me read the, um, the script. Uh, the city council will now meet in executive session to discuss, um, qualifications of an applicant candidate for appointment to an elective, um, office per RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero, um, LH. And, um, council will be in executive session for fifteen minutes. Um, and, um, the council is, um, well, after fifteen minutes, we'll come back and, uh, share our, um, our notice. Okay? And so at this point, we will return at, uh, six fifty-seven.
Okay, thank you. And it's now six fifty-seven. We are back from our executive session. And at this point, before we move forward with a vote, I would like to invite all of you. Well, first of all, thank you all for participating. We appreciate your passion to want to serve your community. And also, if you're not one of the appointed this evening, I do want to invite you to participate in any of our boards and commissions. Please be, with your passion to be involved, please continue that passion and be involved in the commissions. There are several positions that are available for you to participate in. And, you know, one way to to get involved and give back to the community is being part of the community in a board or a commission. And with that, Mayor Protamolony.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. I move to appoint Irving Brown Senior to council position number three, effective July eleventh, twenty twenty-two, through certification of November twenty twenty-three, general election for the city of Pasco Council.
Thank you for that. We have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Serrano.
No.
Campos.
Yes.
Milne. Milne.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Barajas.
Yes. All right, we've got four to one. We have four votes, two one, and that is a majority vote. Mr. Irving Brown, congratulations. And with that, if you'd like to step forward, I will now read your oath to office. Yes, thank you. So if you, if you could raise your right hand, please. I Irving Brown Senior.
I Irving Brown Senior.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
That I will faithfully and impartially perform.
That I will faithfully and impartially perform.
And discharge the duties of the office.
And discharge the duties of the office.
Of council number, position number three.
Of council member, position number three.
For voting district number three.
For voting district number three.
For the city of Pasco, according to law.
For the city of Pasco, according to law.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. And Mr. Irving Brown, would you like to come and join us to the left? And so with that, again, thank you, everyone that participated. Thank you for making the time to come out here and share your knowledge and your passion for city of Pasco again. I'd like to invite you all to participate in any of the boards and commissions. Thank you again.
Madam Mayor, can we also ask the applicants to just hang out for a few more minutes before they leave?
Yes, please. Thank you. And with that, before we start our regular workshop meeting, actually, I do need to start our regular workshop meeting. So with that, we close our special meeting. And my agenda's not working. And with all housekeeping and roll call, so again, it is now seven oh one. This is now our council workshop meeting. All our housekeeping has been already mentioned, but we do have roll call now.
Councilmember Campos.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Did Roach join us? Serrano.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
And Barajas.
Present.
And our newly appointed Brown.
Present.
We have six members present, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you for that.
Five.
Five. Six. Six. It's been a while. We have been online and we have a few missing, so bear with us. And so at this point, we will be taking a five-minute break to adjourn here at seven oh seven. Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. And again, thank you to everyone that participated. And so we will now move on to our workshop meeting. With roll call now out of the way, pledge allegiance also out of the way, we will move on to item four on our agenda, verbal reports from council members.
Mayor, this is councilmember Roach, and I just want to say I apologize for being late, and I'm here. And congratulations to councilmember Brown.
Thank you so much. Thank you for joining us, Councilwoman Roach. Any other councilmembers wishes to report anything, any events that may have occurred in the past week? Councilman Campos.
Not in the past, but I got a big one coming up with the BFT. We're doing a workshop to discuss some of the tax issues that have been ongoing for several months now. And it's anticipated that this is going to be very interactive. So if those are the people who are interested, stay tuned.
Any dates you wish to share?
July thirteenth, I believe at six is when it starts.
Councilwoman Campos, do you, is there anything that we as a city need to do in support of that, or you feel like you have the full backing of the assistant council? Obviously, we don't have a lot of time to draft up and pass a resolution, so maybe not be that, but certainly if it would be valuable for, for example, for me, myself to show up, I'm happy to be there if I can be.
No, thank you, Mayor Protam. That's a great question. And I think probably, you know, if this assumption could be validated by Director White, that our master transportation plan is assuming the current levels of service or better from our public transportation system. I think that may help. Getting a firm nod.
Yes, and that'll be before council at the end of July at a workshop setting, and then the first, likely the first meeting in August.
Okay, great. Thank you, Director White. That was one of my assumptions, and I've shared that with the BFT board. Again, some of the last comments I got in the last meeting were about reaching out to political parties, and personally, I don't feel it's appropriate to ask parties those questions. I know what the answers are going to be. And so I'm up there representing Pasco, and Pasco has asked me to make sure that we have that level of service or better. And that's all I can do is continue to share that message with the BFT board and hope that they hear that the citizens of Pasco are wanting that.
Thank you for sharing that. Councilwoman Roach, do you have anything to share?
I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Serrano, is there anything you wish to share?
Nothing here, ma'am.
Thank you. And with that, we move on to item five on our agenda, items for discussion. Item A, Automated Photo Enforcement Program Study Results. Director Worley.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. As council may recall, back in August of twenty eighteen, council authorized the council authorized the use of electronic traffic enforcement at two of our intersections within the city. One is at Twentieth Avenue and Court, and one is at Road sixty-eight in Burden. And since the spring of 2019, when the cameras were installed, we've been slowly collecting data. And we've come to council a couple of times with information, but some of the information's been pretty spotty due to COVID and shutdowns and that kind of thing. So we continue to look at the data. And so here tonight with us is Brian Chandler from DKS, and he is going to share with you the latest information with the greatest amount of data we have so far.
Thank you.
There we go. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, everyone. Hi, good to see you all again. And I'm just, I'm gonna jump right in and just, as Steve mentioned, I just wanted to first acknowledge those who've been involved with this. Both Steve, of course, at Public Works, and also Jeff Harpster at the Pasco PD. I've had a couple of different meetings with Jeff this time, just taking a look at the data, talking with them about some of our preliminary results, getting their comments on our internal draft memo. And there's a full memo in your packet, too. Also, just to note, nothing that I shared today is separate or extra from the packet. It's all information, mostly the charts and graphs from the packet. Just gonna kind of walk through and describe those, and then get any of your comments and questions. And I'm comfortable with y'all interrupting me in between or in the middle, if that's, you know, something that you want to do, or feel free to hold your questions till the end. Just a quick note, staff on my team that worked on this, Kalu Trap and Jasmine Douglas, both of whom have worked on several projects for us with Pasco over the last couple of years. So what I'll go through today a little bit is give a little bit of, just kind of a recap. As Steve mentioned, I was here about two years ago. I'm giving a preliminary, kind of phase one analysis on the little bit of data that we had at the time on the red light cameras. So this is really a phase two or an expansion of that, using the data we had before and then adding to it. So I'll talk just a little bit about the system itself, mention that preliminary study, and then talk about the really two main data items are the violations, so the number of red light citations collected by the system, and then the crashes, how of the collisions, makeup of the collisions, frequency of collisions change from before and then after the system was installed. And then a little conclusion and potential next steps. So a quick note on the overall study purpose, the system was installed in February of 2019 at the two locations Steve mentioned, sixty-eight and Burden Boulevard and Twentieth Avenue and West Court Street. And there was a preliminary period where the system was operational, and officers were giving, I'm sorry, not, the system was sending out warnings. So between the spring through July, it was sending out warnings, beginning in August 2019, it sent out citations. The way the system works, very, very briefly, I'm not the expert on the electronics and the details of the system. It is a video and a camera system that tracks vehicles, is connected to the traffic signal itself. So if it detects a vehicle running the red light, it'll take a photo, and I believe a video clip of that, and have that in the system. The citation goes to the registered owner of the vehicle. It's not like a point system, or it's not a moving violation. It's essentially a parking ticket for the sake of the kind of legal process. And then there's a fine that comes along with that citation. When someone receives that citation, there's information that's in the packet they receive, that they can look up photo and/or I think maybe a link to a video clip of their violation, and then they essentially can pay by mail. If they want to contest the violation, they can do so. And I refer you to Jeff Harpster to correct anything I might have said wrong about the details of that process, but I believe that's generally how it works. As mentioned, we did a preliminary evaluation in 2020, looking both at frequency of the red light running violations and the frequency of traffic collisions at these two intersections. There are some pretty major limitations with that study that we shared at the time. We only had ten months of citation data after the system went into place, so starting in September 2019 through June of 2020. And a lot of that was, a big chunk of that was during COVID-19, so of course, the data was, you know, it is what it is. Then we only had four months of after-crash data. At the time, we only had the crash data through 2019, so it was really limited. And we had, if you remember, and those of you who are here, we had some preliminary positive information on both counts, but wanted to be sure that we had additional information to bring you. So that was a lot of what we recommended there. Oh, yeah, so we saw the violations had reduced over that time. The average crash frequency reduced, but again, it was, I've, you know, frankly, as I've done crash analysis for twenty years, I wasn't particularly comfortable with that little bit of data in the after period. So the recommendation was doing what I'm doing today, is reanalyze the data once we have another year or so, which we do now. And we've got two full years of after-crash history that we're using, and then we're using four years of before crashes to compare. And that's what I'll show you next. So I'm gonna do two things. I'm first gonna talk about the citations and just talk you through the citation data. I'm gonna start by showing one example, talking through that one example in detail, and then I'll show you all four. One thing I didn't note is that at these two locations, each of them has two directions that actually have the system installed. So all four directions of those signals are not installed. At sixty-eight in Burden, it's northbound and southbound. And at Twentieth and Court, it's two directions orthogonal to each other that I forget, but they'll come up in a minute, and that'll remind me which they are. So it's not just one or the others, you know, one from each of the roads. I apologize for forgetting that, but we'll see that here in just a second. So this example is sixty-eight in Burden, sorry, Road sixty-eight in Burden, the northbound red light citations. So beginning in September, this is when the system first went into place. September, October, November, you can see there a hundred and thirty or so, and then goes down a little, dipped quite a bit into the winter. And you can see it kind of bumped back up a little, and then generally stayed about that same. There's, you know, some seasonal changes that you can see. Generally speaking, it kind of goes up as the weather warms and then goes down in the winter, kind of, but it's not even quite that clear, right? It's a little bit bouncy. Some of that's just statistics, right? These are relatively small numbers, so we expect a little bit of messiness in the data going up and down. And a general kind of flat trend, although we never really got back up to that one twenty-nine, one thirty-five number barely. So you can see there, you know, from a citation standpoint, it did go down a little, but not a lot. And then breaking this down a couple of different ways, we also looked at citations by day of the week. Can see the highest numbers here on the weekend. Friday and Saturday have the highest number of red light running citations. This is again at that same location, northbound at sixty-eight in Burden. And then by time of day, most of the violations are midday, between noon and six. This corresponds to a couple of things. This is the highest volumes also. But we are seeing pretty consistently that kind of noon to two is even higher than the evening rush hour, for whatever reason. Again, I don't, we don't have the exact conclusions there. Can all kind of maybe infer some stories. Maybe it's a lunch hour, get your errands and get back to work. Maybe it's a just, you know, there are a lot of people out midday. And then this, that same information, it's zoomed out here, so we can look at the four different locations. So the top there, we've got Road sixty-eight in Burden, northbound on the top left. That's the exact one I just showed you. Then on the right side at the top, you've got sixty-eight in Burden, southbound. You can see this one's quite a bit more stark, right? It went down quite a bit more initially, and it stayed down. So in this one, we started, you know, quite a bit higher, over three hundred in September and October, and then it dropped down again to the kind of that hundred and fifty or so, and had some months where it's down quite a bit. And then at Twentieth and Court, the directions here are southbound and westbound are where the red light cameras are set up. You can see on the southbound, similar pattern there. We started out, you know, high and then went down and kind of stayed down. The one in the bottom right corner, this is westbound at Twentieth and Court, there was actually a problem with the cameras. They weren't capturing all the violations initially. And so you'll see here, that's why, one, those are very low, also why we colored them a different color. Talking to PD and talking to the folks who did the system, that's an anomaly in the data. So this one's a little bit hard to determine, maybe what those numbers would have been in the early fall. So it's a little bit of a, you can still see that kind of seasonal dips and then back up. Although, again, I say seasonal, and then you look, and it's kind of not necessarily consistent year to year. But what we found here, or kind of my general conclusion on the citation side, is that there was the initial drop in most cases, and it has stayed, you know, relatively down to that level. So it's had some effect, not super drastic on the citation side, but it's, you know, significant, in my opinion. And then looking weekly again, again, the one on the top left is the one we've already seen. Can see Friday tends to be the highest day throughout. Sometimes Saturday, sometimes Thursday peaks up as that second highest day, but Friday for sure. And again, I don't necessarily have a great idea on that, exactly why Friday would be higher than the other days. Some of that might even just kind of be volume midday. We saw the midday, that, you know, twelve to five was the biggest time. So maybe having a higher volume midday at that time. We didn't take that next step to do normalizing by volume or things like that. And then again, you can see daily here at the four locations, stayed, you know, largely the same. One difference between Road sixty-eight and Burden and Twentieth and Court is Twentieth and Court does tend to still have violations late at night. So you can see there at ten PM, eleven PM, we've still got a decent number of violations in those time periods, where it virtually drops to zero overnight at Road sixty-eight in Burden. So that was the citation. Just really quick, any questions on the citation data before we look at crashes?
Okay. Cool.
Sorry, I'll just ask one quick question. I think I heard you say that you have not normalized it for traffic counts, so we don't have any sort of rate information. These are just raw numbers. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, we didn't do a rate per volume for each of those. Yeah, and that's something we've thought about. So far, the general consensus, at least in my mind, is that the story is relatively clear, and I don't think would change that much if we did bring in the volumes. Also, the volumes, I think we have the data. We could take a look at that. The volumes haven't changed a ton during this particular period. They, of course, dipped during COVID, you know, but then came back pretty quickly in Pasco. And so I think the volumes in a, at least a general sense, haven't been drastically different in this relatively short time. Are you talking late 2019 through the end of 21?
So I think what I'm hearing you say is that COVID still is the big object leaving factor in this whole thing, that that's had an effect.
For that, yeah, for that one little piece of time, yeah, I'd say it had some impact, I think, in that, again, March, April, May. But I think, you know, generally speaking, I think, and maybe, I mean, something Steve could speak to, or I don't know, but generally speaking, I think traffic has come back to be at similar levels now as it was in 2019.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so that was a little, maybe, yeah, so I'm gonna kind of get into the crash data. This is where the story gets a little more exciting for me, is because the data is quite clear here. At Road sixty-eight in Burden, the before-after data, just to talk you through this graphic very quickly, the, on the left is the average number of crashes that occurred at this intersection before the installation and citation started to be given at Road sixty-eight and Burden intersection. So this is a four-year average from 2015 to 2018, and there are an average of nearly twenty-four crashes per year at the intersection during that time period. We didn't include the year 2019 in the study. That was the year of the installation. Usually, anytime we do something new, we kind of, we don't try to break that year up into exactly when stuff went in. So for the sake of looking at crashes, we just looked at the 2020 and 2021 data, where we see a significant reduction in the number of crashes, so an average of sixteen collisions per year in each of those two years after the installation of the red light running system. One thing to note specifically at Road sixty-eight in Burden is we did do some other stuff there, as you all know. We did some changes to pavement marking, some signing. There's some other things that happened there. And that, I mean, that's just the nature of any of these studies, is other stuff happens in the world whenever we're doing these. And so knowing that this isn't the only thing that occurred, I still believe, and we'll see that in a minute, we'll look at some of the crash types, is that I think that the, I believe that the red light running system had a, an impact on the crash types we care most about for this type of system. And so these two graphs show before and after for both crash severity on the top, and then a few different crash types on the bottom. At the top there, again, the left side of this, of these graphs, is the before period, 2015 to 2018, and it's an average of collisions that occurred in that year, I'm sorry, in that four-year period. So for example, if you, there, you know, point five suspected serious injuries per year, point two five suspected minor injuries per year, five possible injuries per year in the before period, and then eighteen collisions that had no apparent injury, because property damage only crashes as well. And so you can see that, one particular change here is that if you add those injury crashes, we averaged five point seven five injury collisions per year before the system, and then only one per year after, including no minor or serious injuries, just one, an average of one possible injury. And then on the bottom graphic there is where we looked at some crash types. And a couple of things that we often expect to see whenever we put in a red light running system is a reduction in angle crashes, and usually an increase in rear-end crashes. And you could think that there's kind of some logic behind that. The people stop at yellow lights more when there's an automated red light system, because they're nervous and they don't want to get a red light ticket. And so sometimes when people stop towards the end of the, or somewhere in the yellow that they maybe wouldn't have stopped at before, you can have an increase in rear ends in those directions. We see that sometimes. We didn't happen to see that here. In fact, the rear ends went down, or, no, they did go up just a little bit, but they basically stayed the same, in terms of the average per year. The side swipe crashes went down by half, and that's typically vehicles in the same direction that are changing lanes and hitting each other. So that's not necessarily something that we would expect to be connected directly to the work that we did with the red light system. But you can see the angle crashes eliminated. So they went from three and a half angle crashes per year to zero angle crashes since the system was installed. Then a left turn stayed about the same, and then there's some other crashes as well that weren't captured in those other categories. And so this, to me, is definitely a specific success, especially having the angle crashes go down, and then a little bit of a surprise that the rear-end crashes didn't go up. Then at Twentieth and Court, we've got a similar story in terms of the overall crashes, in that the, we had an average of about eighteen collisions per year in the before period, and then an average of eight after installation of the system. What's a little bit different at Twentieth and Court is we didn't quite see the, the pattern stay the same. The injury stuff turned out about similar, where, you know, we didn't have very many serious or minor injuries. We had some possible injury crashes. So those did go down. So you can see, again, the injuries went from averaging five per year to averaging just two per year. The property damage collisions went way down by more than half. But we can see here, kind of weirdly, is that the rear-end crashes went down quite a bit. The side swipes went down, as we talked about before. Angle crashes went up. The way that I, kind of, one way I explain that is that anytime you see a number like one, it's gonna be really hard to make that better. And so the angle crash is not going down. It is a bit of an anomaly. I don't have a great explanation for why that is. Some of it's just the math of small numbers. I have to be careful that I say that here when the numbers don't go as expected, and it's, and we need to say it on the other one, too, when the numbers did go as expected, right? So we have to be sure with everything that we're doing with numbers this small, we have to be a little bit careful. We don't pat ourselves on the back for the direction we expect, and then kind of like way-hand wave the ones we don't. But just a, a note here, I want to be sure that you're seeing everything. The left turn crashes went down quite a bit, which is just interesting as well. So to kind of, I'm gonna go back one slide, just to show, just to not forget here, we did reduce the crashes here by half. So there's been less than half as many collisions happening at Twentieth and Court as there were before the system went in. And then just to wrap it up, the conclusions here, as mentioned, we have kind of mixed results on the red light running citations. There was an early reduction when the system went in, and then some ups and downs since that initial drop. But in no cases have they gone up to pre-installation levels. And then on the safety side, clear benefits. We've seen collisions that have reduced, especially the injury crashes. And that's really, as I'm a safety engineer, safety is what I do every day. And safety, to me, is defined as helping people not get hurt or killed in crashes. And so those property damage crashes, even though those are annoying, and those sometimes can be precursors of injury crashes, I only care about them for that purpose. I really care about, we sometimes say blood on the pavement, a little bit crass, but it really is what I care about, is how do I reduce people getting hurt whenever they're traveling through your city? At Road sixty-eight in Burden, we eliminated angle crashes, and then at Twentieth and Court, as you saw, we had mixed results by type of crash. And so next step, my recommendation is continue the enforcement as you're doing it at these locations, even taking a look at and considering the additional legs. One reason that we might not have seen as many reductions as we could is that only two of the legs are treated at each location with the system. And considering the other legs could be something to take a look at. And then continuing potential program expansion. There could be other signalled intersections that have similar needs. And then reanalyzing every couple of years again. If it makes sense to continue looking at these, it's not something that you set and forget. You need to keep making sure it's doing the job, because it may not forever. And if it doesn't, that's okay. It just means that was a tool for a time, and then we can use a different tool later if we need to, or some combination of tools. Yeah, with that, I'd be happy to take any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Do we have any questions from our council? Mayor Protem Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Baros, and thank you for the presentation. And I think I was struggling I was struggling with the citations portion because, I'll be honest, I just couldn't care less, right? We're not trying to collect money from people. That's not what this is about. It never has been. Um, we're not trying to, to, to take that sort of approach. It was really about the, the safety, and that's why we voted for this in the first, first place. Um, and to see the collision analysis data showing very clearly, we are reducing accidents at these locations. Um, that's, that's very heartening. I, 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 you know, I, I have s- data se- speculative sort of questions and, and stuff, but I'll, I'll save those for, for later. And perhaps get an opportunity later, you know, for examples, different speed limits at the different intersections, et cetera. There's, there's very different behaviors at those two intersections in terms of properties around them and speed people are going, et cetera. So a lot, lot of, lot of confounding data between the two. Um, but the fact that both of them reduces is really important to me. Um, the question I have is, my, my recollection when I was doing research before we passed this originally was related to, um, that there is a, an amplifying effect that these have. If you signalize one spot, or you do the tra- uh, photo enforcement on one spot, it's not, doesn't necessarily have a, it has an effect in sort of a region, but not, not a really strong effect. Um, but the additional ones did start to change people's behavior and, and a multiplicative sort of way. Have, d- do you have any information, or do you have, or do you have any thoughts on what the right number is? Or, or, or where, where, where we'd want to look at for the next ones, or is that something that, um, Director Worley and, and collaboration with the police department will come back at us later? So I don't want to put you on the spot if it's not.
Yeah, 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 no, let me start. I thi- I think what you're referring to is sometimes called the halo effect. So the idea that you put some of these in and people will act better at nearby locations, or maybe all of your signalized intersections. And if this becomes a program, maybe even to the point that people don't know or remember exactly where they are, or then they start to think, oh, man, this might be the one. And so I need to be careful with this signal too. And that definitely happens in some cities. And so I think there's, there's something to that. In terms of which ones to, to identify or to choose next, we haven't done that analysis. I think that's something that would definitely would be of interest. And I did talk to Jeff Harpsor at, at PD, and that was his direction. Is he, his thought was, you know, there were kind of two reasons we chose these locations. One is, is they had crashes. Two is they're hard to enforce just because of the volumes and the locations they are. And so using those same criteria moving forward, I think would make a lot of sense.
I was just gonna mention the same thing. It's those two criteria that we coordinated with the PD on. And so we would want to apply those same conditions to other intersections to see if there's others that fall in those same categories. So that we know that the purpose of it is to reduce crash risk.
Great. Anyways, I appreciate this. And, um, and because of this, this crash data, it makes me feel good that we did make the right decision. I'll be honest, I, I had my reservations, I think we all did, on, um, when, when this passed, that this, this may be one of those big brother things that we don't want to be involved in. But if we're, we're saving lives and we're helping people, that's, that's, it seems to make a lot of sense. And we keep the, uh, the officers from being in dangerous locations, trying to pull someone over. Those, those two factors seem to, seem to suggest we're do- we're, we're going the right direction on this. Thank you.
Thank you again. Any further questions? Councilmember Serrano, Councilwoman Roach, do you have any questions or comments?
Sure.
I'm here.
I appreciate that. Um, I guess this is for Mr. or Director Worley. How much longer do we have on the contract, um, for this product?
I think it was for two or three years. Two years.
Okay.
And, um, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Uh, I, we, I think we're in, uh, uh, renewal of that contract right now. And so, um, I think we're continuing it until we decide to do otherwise.
Okay. Um, I guess that's the ultimate question. I, I think as a council, we probably need to discuss from policy matter whether or not we want to renew this. Um, just from my perspective, I don't like to be in a continual, just continuation of term. Um, it'd be nice to have an actual clean contract in front of us. So just to make sure I understand it, we've, we've reduced, you know, a handful of accidents. Most of them more minor than major. Um, you know, I, I did hear that there's some revenue collected, so this isn't costing the city. Um, I just want to ensure, you know, that's the correct, I guess, the really nuts and bolts assessment of this. Is that correct?
So the only thing I would say different is I think we actually reduced more major injury crashes than minor property damage crashes.
Okay, I, I appreciate that clarity. Um, yeah, I, I think again, from my perspective, I think as a council, we should probably look at whether or not we want to either, um, extend this contract or create a new one. So I, I think that's just from my perspective, rather than continually running it, you know, as it is. That's, that's all I've got for tonight.
Councilmember Serrano is, uh, Steve Worley. I got some clarification on that. Um, the contract was for three years with two one-year extensions. So we're probably entering into our third year now.
Okay. But the extensions, I assume we have to either give notice or it's automatically renewed. And this is probably something not to discuss here. I, I think, Mr. Worley, if there's something affirmative, some action that needs to be taken on the city's perspective, we should understand what that looks like to continue in the extension. If not, um, I think council should at some point in the near future discuss whether or not we want to allow those two extensions, two one-year extensions to occur, or whether or not, uh, we want to terminate this contract.
Thank you for that. Do we have any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Uh, again, Mr. Chandler, thank you so much for your presentation. We will, um, take you back and discuss, um, and, uh, bring some more questions. It sounds like Mr. Serrano has, uh, questions regarding the contract. So we'll, uh, bring that back and, um, I'm sure he'll reach out to you. Thank you again. So with that, we move on to item B on our agenda, a presentation for I one eighty-two Broadmoor Interchange Access Revision Report. And it goes back to Director Worley again.
Yes, thank you again, Madam Mayor and Council. As you may recall, we have brought to council, uh, a couple of contracts with D K S to do an evaluation of the I one eighty-two Broadmoor Interchange project. And part of that effort was to create a document called an access revision report. And it's a, uh, an A R R. And it's a document that is required by F H W A and WashDOT. Whenever you want to make changes to an interchange on an interstate system. And so, uh, we've gone through the process. And, uh, Aaron Berger, who is the project manager extraordinaire on this project, probably prepared the fastest, most successful A R R in WashDOT history. So, um, he's gonna share with you tonight the results of that, uh, effort. And so, Aaron?
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate your intro. So what we're gonna go over tonight, I'm gonna try and move through this fairly quickly. Um, and like with, with Brian, feel free to interrupt me if you have questions as we go. I'm gonna talk, give some background on the, the project, talk about the location, project purpose, talk about the project engagement, so the, the project teams we had involved throughout, including our public outreach. Uh, we'll talk about the alternatives process, how we, uh, how we developed alternatives, how we came with, up with the solution for those location. Uh, what, we'll talk about some of those specific alternatives that we evaluated. Um, then we'll, we'll talk about the preferred alternative that we've identified, um, and then we'll talk about our next steps in this project. So some background, um, you all are probably fairly familiar with this area, but just to highlight it again, this is the Broadmoor Boulevard and I one eighty-two interchange on the west side of town. Broadmoor Boulevard is also known as Road one hundred by a lot of folks out here. That's, that's another name for it. Um, so this is, is the location highlighted on the screen. This is the interchange we're focusing on. So everybody knows there's a lot of development, uh, pressures in that area, a lot of growth happening in the city in that area. So this, this interchange has been seeing traffic increase for, um, many years. I did my first, uh, project out here in twenty fifteen. It was a study of interchanges, feasibility study of interchanges. And one thing we flagged on that study was that the Broadmoor Interchange was probably gonna start having some level of service issues right around twenty twenty or so. And it's pretty much how, how things have worked out. There's quite a bit of traffic there today. Focusing in on some of the, the, the issues there right now, this figure kind of highlights, um, some of the, the key, the key issues we're seeing both today and then looking into the future as some of this development comes in. Uh, from an operations perspective, so looking at the traffic, um, there's some long queues today. If you've driven through there during rush hour, there's the queues that back up down all the way onto one eighty-two and back across the river. That's a big, big concern, both from a traffic, uh, traffic operations perspective, a lot of delay, and that's a lot of frustration. Uh, also from a safety perspective, um, slowing in the right lane on the freeway when you've got lanes going sixty-five, seventy miles an hour right next to it. That's, that's a big cause for concern. Um, so that's a big issue we're seeing, and we only expect that to get worse as the traffic continues to grow at this interchange. Um, safety, as I noted, the, the issue with the queues at the ramp, but also at the ramp terminal, there's some other crash issues, high crash occurrences at that, uh, the signal, particularly at the eastbound ramp terminal. So if you think, look at the picture, the, the southern ramp terminal, um, that's the, that's the one where we're seeing the biggest issues. And then from a active transportation perspective, so bicyclists and pedestrians, um, this corridor is really not passable. Um, if you're, if you're trying to walk through there, you're trying to bike through there, and you think of the, the STEM school, there's the Catholic school of the south. There's, there's definitely some potential for pedestrian movements there. And then, and then as the Broadmoor area continues to develop, there will be even more demand for people to cross this interchange. Um, right now, the current facility doesn't really have any, uh, pedestrian or bicycle facilities. It's just got five-foot shoulders. We can actually highlight some of those issues here. Um, this is some stuff we picked up from fieldwork and from as-built. Um, there's issues with drop inlets in the bike lanes. It's really hard to ride a bike through there without putting a tire through one of those. Um, you've got to make a lot of crossings of, uh, ramp movements if you want to just get through the interchange. So we've highlighted those. If you want to make a fully, we call it fully protected crossing, so cross at signals to get all the way through the interchange, that picture on the right, that yellow arrow shows the route you have to take to get through the interchange and make a crossing with a signal every time. That takes four crossings, um, to get through the interchange. So that highlights, that really highlights the, the issues we're seeing out there. So this project, based on the issues we're seeing today, and really focusing, um, on the short term, but also developing for the, the long term, making sure that we were able to address some of these big growth needs that are coming in the area. We developed our project purpose. So this is the, really got three prongs. Reduce congestion at the I one eighty-two off-ramp, um, diverges. That's a technical term. It's really the exit ramp, um, the exit ramp from I one eighty-two to, uh, Broadmoor Boulevard when you're traveling eastbound. So from, uh, reduce congestion at the I one eighty-two off-ramp diverges in the terminal at Broadmoor Boulevards, that's the signal. Um, caused by the growth in the Broadmoor area identified in the city of Pasco Comprehensive Plan. So that's all the growth we're expecting in that area. Then improve traffic safety at the I one eighty-two off-ramps and the ramp terminals of Broadmoor Boulevard. And then improve the active transportation facilities along Broadmoor Boulevard through the I one eighty-two interchange, which is currently a critical gap in the city's active transportation network. So you think about as a bicyclist or a pedestrian in the city right now, your options to get across one eighty-two, very limited. You've got Road sixty-eight, which is also not a great crossing location. You've got Road one hundred Broadmoor, you've got Court Street. There, there's not a lot of options in that area, and that's a, that's a lot of miles to cover.
Aaron, could I add one other thing? The, we, we tend to focus a, a lot on project purpose and project need because that is a very specific thing that F H W A and WashDOT require. Because we have to get agreement from them on what the purpose and need for the project is. And then all of the alternatives that get evaluated, that Aaron's gonna go through, all get evaluated against that purpose and need. So that, it may seem like we're getting a little technical or whatever, but it's, it's important in terms of the A R R process to really establish what that purpose and need is.
Yeah, and for this, this project in particular too, it's on a, not just a state facility, it's an interstate. So it, it, F H W A is involved and WashDOT. We can't just go in and build whatever, whatever we want there. We have to get several levels of approval, um, all the way up to the state. State F H W A and the state, um, engineer. Um, so that, so we have to follow these, these processes. So this is a, a, a brief overview of what the access revision report process looks like. The first step is to find that purpose and need. We just went through the needs. We just talked about the project purpose. That's our purpose and need. That was an actual formal document we put together. The next step is typically this non-access feasibility study, which is where you look at all the solutions that don't involve changing the, uh, state facility, changing the interchange. So let's, let's try and fix the problem off-site with local improvements. Well, most of that work's already been done through the T S M P, other studies that have already been completed in this area, supporting the Broadmoor, uh, the Broadmoor development. Um, so we, we worked with WashDOT, and they allowed us to essentially substitute those other studies for this typical study. Because we'd already narrowed down the issue and said, look, there's, there's pieces of this that we can't fix with more connections over one eighty-two or things like that. So we were able to skip, essentially skip that step. We, uh, we, we substituted for that step. Um, so based on that finding from prior analysis, that the issue's gonna be fixed with local solutions only. So then the next step is you establish your support teams. I'll go over what those are. And then you develop some methods and assumptions for your evaluation. Um, you conduct the A R R, so the access revision report, um, which includes an alternatives analysis. Um, and then once your preferred alternative is identified, that's when you move into the N I P A C E P A process. So this is the environmental process for a project, um, which in this case involves F H W A. And then we get the final approval on the A R R and the N I P A at the same time. So the way this works right now, um, and we'll go over this a little bit further at the end, but we've finished our, our draft A R R document. We're, we're about to submit that to WashDOT for their conditional approval. So they will, they will provide approval of the, essentially the track, traffic portion of it. And then once we've completed the, the N I P A process, we will get the final approval from F H W A. And the reason for all this is this is a, an interstate facility. To do any changes to the access on a free, uh, freeway facility like this, we need to have those levels of approval. So work completed to date, define the project purpose and need. And this all began, was it September, Steve? I believe September of last year. We defined our project purpose and need. We got the consensus on advancing directly to the A R R, so substituting, substituting prior work for the non-access feasibility study. We formed our support teams, initiated a public process, completed our methods and assumptions. Um, then we developed our alternatives, screened and evaluated alternatives, identified a preferred alternative, and completed the draft A R R document. And we submitted that, received our comments from WashDOT. We're addressing those and submitting for final, um, within the next couple of weeks. So I'm gonna touch now on the project engagement, starting first with our support teams. So the, the project team was led by the city of Pasco, Steve Worley, the project manager. And then we had, uh, five consultants on the team, with D K S associates, K P F F, Wydner Associates, Geo Engineers and H L A, all providing support in different roles. Our executive team, so this is really the, 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 the group that reviews the final, kind of the final versions of each of these reports. Uh, they're representatives from the city of Pasco, from WashDOT South Central Region, WashDOT Headquarters, F H W A, uh, Franklin County, uh, Ben Franklin Transit, and the, um, M P O, B F C O. So they are all represented on the executive team. And then from those specific jurisdictions, there were select members who were involved in the Technical Advisory Committee, which is really more of the, the hands-on group. And these are the folks that were involved in the alternatives development process, involved in reviewing all the technical materials. Again, we had folks from city of Pasco, WashDOT Headquarters, South Central Region, F H W A, Franklin County, B F T and B F C O, and the TAC as well. So those were our support teams. And then the, on the public process side of things, so we, we developed, our first step was develop a public involvement plan. We completed that last fall. And then we put up a project website and the social pinpoint comment solicitation section. So that's a, uh, basically a map. Some of you may have seen it if you attended any of our, uh, work sessions, so have access to that, where you can put in comments and input on the project. Allows us to track public input that's coming in, and Steve and I have been responding to that as well, as we've, we've had different questions and, um, ideas come in for the project. We had our first open house last fall in November, uh, where we presented the project purpose and got some input from the public on the needs, uh, seen at the, uh, at the interchange, and also some ideas for alternatives. People have lots of interesting ideas, things they'd like to see tried out at that location. So we, we solicited feedback that meeting. That was a remote meeting, very well attended. I think we had over two hundred folks end up tuning in for it. Um, very interactive. We had a good Q and A session. Um, so yeah, the, with, the public outreach was, um, surprisingly, uh, well-attended throughout. Then our second work session was the spring in March, I play winter, uh, March first. And here we presented the, um, the alternatives we were, we were preparing to evaluate. So we'd done some initial screening, fatal flaw screening, and we presented the alternatives that we had. We were, we were ready to take an evaluation. We solicited feedback from the public on what their appetite was for the different options we were presenting. Um, and did a survey on preferences to understand where, where people, uh, were at with the different ideas. Now, one task left for us on the public involvement side is to put together project flyers, presenting our preferred alternative, kind of a cut sheet describing, you know, in short, what the, what the project outcome is and how the, the next. and how the, the next steps are gonna take place. So moving on into our alternatives process, and this is really where we, we dug into both our, our TAC team, the, the members of that TAC, and then we also, uh, it solicited input from the public, brought their ideas into this process as well. Kind of put it all into this funnel and worked our way down, um, ultimately to our, our preferred alternative. So our first step was, you can see brainstorm alternatives, then we went to refining the alternatives. We did a first level screening, then an alternatives analysis, then a second level scoring of alternatives, and then finally arrived at our preferred alternative. So for the brainstorming of alternatives, this is, uh, probably the most interactive and, uh, fun part of the project for some of us. Um, we actually had this as a, um, kind of a homework assignment for everybody on our TAC. And they, everybody had a chance to, they had, you know, about five days or so to come up with ideas and just sketch them out on their own, in, on their own, basically concept boards, we called them. So we got all these different ideas for the interchange. And there were, the guidelines everybody was working off of was that same project purpose and the project need that we'd already clearly defined. So they had that as their, their baseline to start with and then everybody came up with different ideas. And we have representatives from all these different jurisdictions providing ideas as well as the ideas from the public that we input into this part of the process as well. So we took all those alternatives and the first step for us was to sift through them a bit and figure out how to combine, which ones were redundant, which ones were, you know, people giving the same idea, just, um, fr- framing it a different way. And then ways to kind of group them. Because what we realized pretty quickly was there were a lot of different alternatives for the interchange that didn't necessarily conflict with each other. You could build two different things and they'd both help the interchange and they, that could happen at the same time or at different times. So it was important that we were able to see that breakdown and understand how those different pieces, um, could be. We didn't want, uh, essentially an alternative to score poorly just because it was grouped with something else that went poorly. So we separated our alternatives into five different categories. We had the freeway alternatives, he's really focused on the 182 part of it. What's going on at that exit ramp? What are we doing on the freeway side of it? Then we looked at the two ramp terminals. So the two signalized intersections, both at the eastbound and the westbound ramp terminals. So you think of the interchange as the north and the south intersection. Then we, then there were the alternatives that focused exclusively on active transportation improvements. So alternatives that were just focused on better ways to get bikes and pedestrians across the interchange. And then finally, there were some solutions that really kind of had all of that in them. There, we call these the comprehensive solutions, they're really the, the big, the big solutions. Let's completely rebuild the interchange, let's really reconfigure things. If, those would, could have an active transportation component, they could affect the freeway, they could affect the ramp terminals. So that was kind of the catch-all last, last category we created. To narrow down these alternatives, we took kind of this two-step process. The first was our first level screening, which is really qualitative fatal flaw analysis. So we really used that project purpose and need. And we looked at the, the concepts to see, does it have some major right-of-way impacts? Or something that is not real, is not needed to, to meet the project, um, purpose and would cut, you know, would have a, um, potentially negative impact on other aspects of the interchange. So we did that first level screening and I will say for our, um, credit to our TAC and to the public as well, uh, we hardly screened out any alternatives in this first level. Every, the alternatives that we got were so well thought out that most of them got through this sieve almost immediately. They were, they're very, very good alternatives. So we took those alternatives that advanced past the first level. We did some more conceptual design, more, more layouts. And then we did our second level quantitative evaluations. This is where we really look at performance measure. We look at how the traffic performs, how the safety improves, how the active transportation improves. We have quantitative measures for all of those things. We capture that and then we came, ultimately would score the alternatives against each other. So here's a look at kind of that refinement process. So as you can see, the alternatives got a little bit more defined from what we started with. Instead of notes, you can see more of the, um, you know, the, the fat lines on the map. So that takes us to our, our freeway, our alternatives evaluated. So once we got through that, uh, that level one, at one, um, analysis where we, we did the initial screening and we're into the level two evaluation. So I'm gonna go quickly through the alternatives that we looked at, at this level. These are ones that we did some analysis on. So starting with the freeway, we looked at a, a new loop ramp serving eastbound I-182 to northbound Broadmoor Boulevard traffic. Um, this is actually a project that, when the interchange was initially designed, this was anticipated as a future phase. That, and you can tell, just looking at the aerial there, at the top, the top image, you can see how the right-of-way is laid out. There's clearly room for a loop ramp in there. It's, it's pretty obvious that that was a, that was thought out at some point. Uh, another option would be to just widen the existing on-ramp. So make it, make it bigger to deal with that congestion issue at the exit. So make it a double lane off-ramp. And then the, uh, another option, which doesn't necessarily conflict with either of those two alternatives, was to add a deceleration lane at the existing eastbound off-ramp. What really triggered that was we were seeing a lot of rear-end collisions in that area. In general, just a lot of collisions at the exit ramp. Not surprising, given the traffic, uh, and this deceleration lane would help. Today, if you think about it when you're driving on 182, it's a pretty abrupt exit. There's no lane that you get into to slow down or prepare to exit. You just branch off from 182 and head off toward the signal. At the ramp terminal, we looked at, um, three different options. We looked at it at a roundabout at the, at the ramp terminal with the loop ramp in place and then a roundabout with the existing configuration. Important clarification there because those are very different, um, intersection configurations. If that loop ramp is in place, you have different volumes, different movements through the intersection. Um, the loop ramp definitely simplifies and, uh, reduces conflicts at this intersection. Because it takes all your left turns, eastbound left turns today and turns them into westbound right turns. Many, a lot less conflicts. Um, then there, yeah, roundabout at the existing ramp, uh, with the existing configuration. And then a signal with, a reconfigured signal with the loop ramp. That was the, the third option we looked at. The westbound ramp terminal, we looked at some different geometries, flying T intersection. This was a concept WashDOT actually came up with, which essentially takes your left turn and it, it, your westbound left turn and would go into its own lane. So it basically get its own lane as it turns on to Broadmoor Boulevard. Um, then we had a dual westbound right turn lane. We looked at that, at this intersection as well and a new roundabout. We'll note here at the westbound ramp terminal, we are not seeing any significant can crash or congestion issues here today. This is really looking out in more than the fifteen to twenty-year horizon. With the way, a- as fast as things grow in Pasco, that may end up being more of a ten-year horizon, which is why we do want to make sure we're, we're looking for a, um, a solution at this location as well. But it's not quite as hot, but in a priority issue as the, the eastbound ramp terminal. And then for our access, our active transportation alternatives, we have several different ones. Um, we looked at a new bike ped bridge on the west side. We looked at grade separating the, uh, bikes and peds at the ramp terminals, so doing tunnels or over crossings, um, depending on what the grades dictated there. Uh, we looked at ped bridge on the east side, um, was with the same type of connections, uh, or grade separations at the ramp terminals. We looked at a new ped crossing that roughly aligns with Midland Lane. Um, that would be farther to the east and that would also require a shared use path along the, um, 182 eastbound on-ramp. And then we looked at some alternatives that focused on the existing structure. So we widened the existing Broadmoor Boulevard v- bridge to accommodate a bike and ped path that would be protected by a median, um, from the, uh, vehicles. And then also a kind of a low cost, and we really focused on this more as a, a temporary solution, but restriping the bridge to focus the bicycle and pedestrian activity to one side of the bridge. So we'd basically do a much narrower, narrower, narrower shoulder on one side and then you'd use that extra space on the other side, put in some temporary curve and some, um, delineators to mark out the pedestrian space better and try to, at least provide some protection at the crossing. And then on the cumulative alternatives, the one that really, um, came through for, for our analysis to look at was the, this DDI. Now, the concept I'm showing here is a DDI with roundabouts. It's a pretty, uh, it, it's a fairly new concept, it's not been done in too many places. And we considered, when we considered a DDI, we really considered kind of all DDI, so a signal or roundabout. Roundabouts, there was some, had a little bit of promise for helping us reduce our cross-section, uh, across the 182. We thought we might be able to get away with just a, two lanes in each direction instead of requiring three in the northbound direction. Ultimately, through our analysis, we determined that you still would need the three lanes, um, regardless if you did roundabouts or signals. But we, we looked at the DDI concept to see if this would, um, this could be the solution. Key with this one was thinking about project purpose and need. This, the, the solution really focuses on a lot more issues. It's kind of a big, a big solution. And our thought process was if the DDI is the best solution at this location, let's look at it now. Because there isn't really a phased approach to a DDI. For those of you who have seen how these work, this really changes your direction of travel. So if you're going northbound, you're actually on the left side of the road, uh, because you get crossed over at the, at the ramp terminals. So there's really no half-measure for a, a DDI, you gotta go all in. So what we wanted to do was identify, is this, is this actually the, the best solution at this location long-term? What we found when, through our analysis was this does not work well at this location. DDIs are great solutions, not for this location. And what really highlights it is you look at what you have to do to build one. That loop ramp that's out there today would have to go. You can't make that work with a DDI because of the directions of travel. Um, and that loop ramp was put in there for a purpose, there's a very heavy volume that uses that. That volume moves back into conflict with the rest of the interchange when you take that loop ramp out. And ultimately, that just built out your DDI to such a big cross-section, it was unwieldy. The, the weave movements became problematic on the bridge and there were a lot of issues that it created. So we ultimately determined that the, the, uh, DDI is, is not the best solution at this location. So after all, all the, looking at all these alternatives and we screened these based on the different subcategories and we, we grouped them together and ultimately we, we created a, we, we ended up with what we called our combined solution, which was the highest scoring individual, um, pieces for the freeway, for the ramp terminals, for the active transportation. We, and we, uh, scored that against our highest scoring cumulative alternative, which was the, the DDI. And the, the combined alternative, um, significantly outperformed the, the DDI, both from traffic operations, safety, um, and, and with the benefits to active transportation. So what you're looking at here is our, our preferred alternative, which is a, a series of, there's a series of pieces to this. Um, there's the deceleration lane added on, uh, 182 eastbound. There's a new loop ramp that serves traffic going eastbound 182 to northbound Broadmoor Bou- Boulevard. New roundabout at the southbound ramp terminal, uh, new roundabout at the westbound ramp terminal. And then a, um, multi-use path slash bridge on the west side. So that, that would be a new bike ped bridge. Ultimately, that scored better than the, um, than widening the bridge. The structural feasibility of widening the bridge enough to accommodate a, um, a bike ped path turned out to be, it was actually more expensive than building a separate structure. And th- there was really no benefit to that. So the, the separate structure actually, um, scored better. And the total cost for all these components is approximately fourteen to sixteen million. That was their, our planning level estimate. So this is the, the preferred alternative. Um, summarizing the kind of performance of this alternative, thinking back to our purpose and need. Um, the new loop ramp and deceleration lanes reduce the 182 eastbound exit ramp congestion and improve safety. I didn't word that very well. Um, and it improves the safety at the eastbound exit by reducing slowing caused by congestion. So this really, it, the, this configuration allows us to serve that exit volume without having backups onto the freeway. Um, key thing to note here, the, um, the 182 bridge itself is a big constraint to this whole location. And we're talking about the, the Columbia River Crossing. That, that bridge can only serve so much traffic. Um, and we did hear a lot of input, especially from the public and, uh, different folks, um, in that area of, we really gotta build it out, gotta build something big enough for all the growth. There is only so much traffic that can ever get to this interchange because it's coming from three lanes on 182 across the river. So there, there's that limitation and that's something we accounted for in our analysis. We could build a massive interchange here, but the traffic would never get there if we, uh, if we really build it out. So that, that was a key here of making sure we right-size our solution. We don't build something that won't, that traffic will never reach. Uh, the roundabout, the westbound ramp terminal also improved safety and congestion in 2045. But as I noted, there's no significant congestion today at this intersection. There are really no significant safety issues either identified there. Um, and then the roundabout at the eastbound ramp terminal, uh, reduces congestion and is expected to reduce crashes by thirty-five percent and the severity of crashes by almost fifty percent. Typical of roundabouts, when you replace a signal with a roundabout, you get a lot of safety benefits. Brian can back me up on that one. Um, the off-ramp and Broadmoor Boulevard queues are maintained within available storage. So we're able to deal with all that traffic. And we were looking out twenty years into the future, so we did a, a twenty-year forecast. So this is including a lot of development in the Broadmoor area. And then from a bicycle and pedestrian standpoint, we would now have a low, we call it a low-stress route for bikes and pedestrians through the inter, uh, the interchange. They'd either be separated from traffic or at the ramp terminals, they'd be dealing with low-speed, uh, vehicle movements at the, at the ramp terminals because the roundabout does a good job of getting those vehicle speeds down. Um, and also the required ped crossings to get through the, uh, interchange. If you go through, go along the west side, if you just stick with the west side of Broadmoor Boulevard, you can get through it with two crossings. And you only have to cross the right turns off the eastbound ramp and the right turns off the southbound ramp. Those are your only two crossings and you're through. And you can also reduce that, that bike ped crossing distances to around twenty-four feet. So you don't have to cross anything longer than twenty-four feet. So the next step was look at this from a phasing perspective. So how do we build this? What, what are the, the steps that need to happen? Because as you can see, these are all pieces of a project that don't necessarily have to happen at the same time. So we've outlined our, our initial phasing for this. Um, looking at, by, by color, you can see kind of the, the layout. So phase one A is the, and I just realized that the labeling here is a little off. It's supposed to be phase one A, phase two B, phase one B and phase two. So phase one A is the, the light blue, so that's the deceleration lane, the loop ramp and the, uh, the roundabout at the eastbound ramp terminal. And then there's a, the temporary restriping of the bridge, we also recommend doing. Um, if funding hasn't been identified yet for that multi-use bridge, um, that's, that multi-use bridge, that phase one B, that's also a priority that needs to happen. But I, the funding for that could happen through grants. There's a, there's a lot of opportunities for a project like that, but if, it's not identif- if it's not identified yet, then this temporary restriping would be at, at least a patch solution to help pedestrians through here for the time being. And then the last phase two would be, uh, that, that roundabout at the westbound ramp terminal. So I, I just walked through those, those different phases. And notice I threw on here a phase three, which is, I want to point out, this, this project does not fix everything forever at this interchange. There could potentially be issues, particularly at the westbound on-ramps in the future. It's not an issue that's, that's there today yet, it hasn't been, been identified yet. But there could be other issues in the future. This project is compatible with other future, um, additions, needs at the, um, at this interchange. We, we, you can do a lot more still at that other ramp, um, in the future and, and this project won't preclude anything. So that's something important with this design, we want to make sure it was flexible and compatible with addressing future needs. Our next steps are to, uh, commence the thirty percent design or continue what we've already, um, put together as part of all this work. So the, the thirty percent design will continue, um, get our finding of engineering and operation feasibility granted from WashDOT and FHWA, so that's kind of the provisional traffic approval of the ARR. We'll complete the NEPA documentation and we actually think we can get through most of this before the thirty percent design is completed. Um, we're on, on track to, to get most of that done. We, we anticipate a cat X, a categorical exclusion on this. There's no, we're not anticipating any right-of-way takes, um, and there's no real, um, sensitive habitats. I think we got the, the sensitive habitat already waived for the area inside the loop ramp, so we're in good shape there. Um, the biggest concern actually from NEPA right now is making sure our traffic control is gonna be, um, if, if we can do this without detours, because detours are gonna be a big challenge at this, uh, interchange. Um, so then we combine the NEPA and SEPA document with the ARR and that's when we get our final approval from FHWA. Um, then we complete the bid plan set. And meanwhile, the, the design will be ongoing as these approvals are working through. And then we ultimately go to bidding and construction. All right, questions? I think I talked about as fast as that process went.
Thank you for your presentation, uh, Mr. Berger.
Berger? Berger.
Berger, sorry.
I answered both.
Berger. Um, any questions from council? Uh, Councilman Mellon?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I can just say that I'm glad to see this, glad to see this is moving along hopefully quickly. I know I live on the Road 100 and Court, uh, intersection there and heading south. There's been a couple of times where once you come off the freeway heading south, you have a real quick second of just a couple of seconds and so trying to merge in or if the guy in front of you stops, it's. And so trying to merge in or if the guy in front of you stops, it's, and you're looking to see if cars are coming. It's very dangerous and I've almost been hit a couple of times. Um, so I'm, I'm glad to see that you have the dills, deceleration lane, just because you're coming up the hill, you have to accelerate and then.
Yep.
Uh, it's, it's fairly, uh, dangerous, so, uh, hopefully this will move along quickly. But I do appreciate all your work on this, I think it's a great concept with the roundabout. I could honestly see that, I, I really love the idea. I'm not a big fan of roundabouts, but, uh, this one I definitely love, so, so thank you.
Yeah, I will say on this one, I, my initial gut feel was, oh, I think we're probably gonna go with the signal here. Uh, that was just kind of my first, gee, I guess, guess at it. Um, but as we started to dig in and we looked at really what's growing, what are the movements that are gonna be a problem here? The roundabouts just started to, I mean, they, they always look strong from a safety and an active transportation perspective. But operationally, they really stood out, especially when you put the loop ramp in. You put all those pieces together and the, you limit so many of the conflicts at that intersection. It's almost a little free-flow situation, you, you really reduce all the conflict. So yeah, it, it turned out to be an outstanding, um, option. It outperformed the signal based on operations, so it's a pretty easy recommendation there.
Couldn't agree more, so thank you, I do appreciate it.
Mayor Perdano Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor Barahas, and thank you for the, uh, for the extensive presentation. I know this has obviously been huge for all of us for a while, where I, I think, uh, most of us that, I guess the folks that have been on the council the longest. Um, this is one thing I think came up in every one of our, our election campaigns, the feedback from the community is massive on this. I was able to attend one of the, um, the public sessions and there was a lot of engagement. I thought that process was great, the dropping the pins, the interactivity, fantastic. So I really wanna say kudos to that whole process, I think really brought us a, a good product and a lot of, um, engagement, uh, from the community. Um, my, my question's more about funding than, and cost than, than anything. Um, so we're talking about the phased approach here. And approximately how much of that is, would, it would be recommended is a phase one, the priority phase is there. Um, he said fourteen to sixteen million, it looks like probably that's, that's mo- the, the lion's share of the, of the total cost would be in that phase one, is that accurate?
Not, not really, the, um, the ped bridge is a big chunk of that. Um, actually, the, the phase one A piece is a little less than half of that total. Yeah, the, the, the ped bridge is, anything structural that size with big spans. It's, it's a, it's a chunk of change and it's also one of those things when you do a planning estimate versus when you, you start to move into the details of design and actually figure it out. That number sometimes can come down, although I don't like to say anything will come down now in a cost estimate with inflation and everything else. It's probably a safe estimate at this point.
So between phase one A and then, uh, phase one B with the, the, the bike ped bridge. Um, that together would make up what, seventy-five percent of the funding?
Yes, yeah, you had the last roundabout is probably about, I, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I think it's around two and a half million, something like that, two, two to two and a half.
Okay, great, and then my other question is, um, we know that there's a massive amount of development going on in this area. And so this is a funding question and it may not be fair to ask you of that, so I'd be, I'd welcome any staff to, to jump in, that might, might be better to answer this. Um, a lot of this development, some of its, its need right now, that is overdue, not due to new development, but obviously a lot, a lot of this is planning or future development. How much is this being covered by traffic impact fees or, um, to, or private developers as part of this? Is this, this portion is now to a spot where it's really the city's job at this point to cover under existing funding, um, and mechanism? Or is this something that we are expecting the, the developing community to help weigh in on?
This particular one can be addressed in several different ways. First thing is, is we are going after all of the funding opportunities that are available. There's a lot of federal and state dollars that are going around in different transportation programs. And, uh, we are looking at each one of those and trying to apply for funding for either the pedestrian bridge, if it fits that category. Or the loop ramp or, you know, intersection improvements, safety improvements, we're looking at all of that. The second thing is that I believe, uh, and City Manager Zabel can correct me, that this project is also included in the tax increment finance list of projects. So it would be the, the increased, uh, taxes that are increased from the value of the developments in Broadmore that will help pay for this project.
That, that is correct, and I think there's a, probably a third piece. Um, we are in the process of evaluating a traffic impact fee for the area. And that can include the TIF fees, it just pays off the TIF, uh, amount quicker. So that's, saw a number of these projects, Broadmore Corridor, Burns, uh, Road and Broadmore Signal. Some of those that are related to general development in the area, uh, would be factored into that transportation impact fee. Uh, probably the pedestrian, bike, the multimodal bridge piece, I think would probably be more difficult. You know, usually, uh, TIF or TIF fee in this, this case, meaning impact fee is based on vehicular volume. Just, it's hard to make a nexus with bike and ped traffic, particularly that far offsite.
Hey, thank you for the reminder about the tax increment financing piece that we, we've discussed previously, that, I think that's, that's a very solid option for us. So appreciate the reminder that that was a big portion of this. Um, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Campos.
Thank you, Mr. Berger, I kinda, this is out of left field a little bit. Um, so I've recently, uh, my daughter's seventeen, so she's learned how to drive in the last year. I've been driving in the tri-cities for the better part of fifteen, sixteen, eighteen years now, maybe-ish, I've lost count. But one thing I, I've always heard, especially with roundabouts, is people don't know how to use them here in the tri-cities. Did you guys plan for any contingencies, taking the Y into example? There was a revision made because it seemed like people weren't aware on how to use it. Here a couple of years ago, they reduced the lanes, there's a new asphalt interchange to reduce that flow of traffic. Have you guys looked at any contingency planning on how to prevent future revisions or to teach drivers on how to use this particular tool?
For the roundabout specifically?
Anything you've got?
Yeah. So, well, I, I thought it was interesting when we, when we were working with the public on this. There was a really big appetite for a diverging diamond interchange, which in terms of, um, instinctive driving, that is probably the most challenging. Um, driving concept out there and that requires a heavy educational aspect. Um, for this, the roundabout we're proposing, particularly at the eastbound ramp terminal. Um, I think education is gonna be very important, there can, and with the work we've done with the public outreach already, I think we can piggyback off of that. To, to put together animations, things like that, to help people understand how to drive through it. Um, I think there's gonna be an important, public-facing piece of this too, just with a, a new configuration, right? If, if we put in a loop ramp to go north on Broadmore Boulevard. Uh, our intent with the, this, this design is to make sure that if you use the existing ramp, you can't go north. Or if you wanna go north, you have to go south and make a U-turn somewhere and head back up. Um, because that's the only way it's gonna really function effectively. So there's gonna be a big, there, there's gonna need to be an educational component to that, just helping people understand, if I wanna go north now, I have to use the second ramp. And we, we've got a signing plan already laid out, looking at how you sign it. Tip- typical of most large interchanges, you have multiple signs for that. For the roundabout itself, um, this is actually gonna be one of the simpler roundabouts to drive. Because the, typically at an interchange, the, there's less movements. We don't actually have to make it a full circle, right? It can, it only has to be a partial circle. So there's really only a couple of options for you to do when you get to the roundabout. We can channelize the, the approaches so that the, the vehicles coming from the ramps, th- those movements are not accessible to somebody who might try to make a wrong-way movement. So we, we can really do a lot of this with curving, signing, but a lot of, a lot of it with curbing. So physically, essentially physically educate people on how to drive a roundabout. Um, that's, that's really gonna be our probably main approach.
Okay, thank you. Um, I've seen drivers mess up even the simplest roundabouts, single lanes, and so just, and then food for thought. You know, I've heard in my ride-alongs with some of our, our first responders is that, you know, physical restraint like that also impedes their progress to do their job. So, um, just something to think about, again, it's a little out of left field, but i- it's, it's on my mind.
Yeah, and it's a good question, I mean, that's, we, we do get a lot of questions from trucks, how are trucks gonna navigate those? And there's ways you do, design a roundabout for that, you have the truck aprons, you have, make sure that the fire access works as well. Um, but I think, I, especially the WashDot folks have a lot of data on this, Brian has a lot of data on this as well. The, um, the, the safety benefits of roundabouts, there's, there's a lot of perceived issues, but what those issues tend to do is slow people down. Right, that's, that's really what they tend to do and that's okay. If, if people slow down, they get used to it, they get a feel for it. We don't want people getting really, really confident and blasting through the roundabout, we want them to slow down and drive it properly. Once you get a feel for it, it, it'll be educational. I mean, the first, the first year is gonna be a little bit interesting, but it, you know, typically what you see are, you know, small PEO crashes. The, the stuff that's just people driving slow and whoops, then didn't realize it was supposed to yield there or something. Um, so it's, it's, it's really the design can dictate how well it, easy it is to drive.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Rono, Councilwoman Roach, do you have any questions or comments?
None here.
None here.
Thank you. Um, I do have a couple of questions, um, and I'm interested to hear, just before you go. I'm interested to hear what Chief, uh, or anyone from the police department has to share. My understanding, there's several types of roundabouts, or is that correct?
There's many different kinds that depending on the situation, the traffic, the number of legs, the volumes, all kinds of things.
Okay, so focusing, uh, I'm thinking of the one here as you enter into Richland, um, over on, um, is it Duportail, I think? Um, there's, there's one roundabout, um, as you go to the, um, to the right. But as you're exiting to come, uh, eastbound, there's that figure eight roundabout. There's, you go around one circle, then you do another full circle on the next roundabout. Um, that's not what you're proposing, uh, from what I can see here.
No.
Um, I wonder how that has helped the city of Richland reduce their accident or their traffic flow? How it's impacted the trucks, first responders that are traveling through there? Just a question out there, I'm not expecting really.
We'll look into it.
Input on that, really. Um, considering that this is a sizable budget for a huge project. Um, there's a high school in that area and I have seen kids walk, ride their bike, cross. Um, the lanes to get to, you know, make use of that, of that area there. Um, whatever we do, however much we invest in this. Uh, I do want special focus on making sure that we're taking attention to making it as safe as possible to get across. Especially for the students, the schools that are out there, it's, it's not safe for them to cross. Um, so with that, um.
I was just gonna add, that's actually one of the elements that makes this project very attractive for some of the funding that's out there. Because the existing interchange is not safe. And so that's a high priority for WashDot, it's a high priority for us, it's a high priority for FHWA. And so what's being proposed here under this project, everybody's in agreement that this is the solution. Now let's see if we can get some grant funding to support that.
Perfect, thank you, City Manager.
Yeah, I was just gonna comment, uh, one of the, one of the things we've been doing the last couple of weeks, uh, regarding the, uh, tax increment financing project is outreach into the county. And, uh, of course, one of their big concerns is freight traffic to and from the ag areas to the north. And, uh, so those, uh, the roundabouts and the design of those are something foremost on my, on our minds. So we can make sure that, uh, we'll be able to service those larger rigs, uh, that are accessing and, and helping support our ag areas to the north. As well as certainly public safety vehicles, most particularly fire engines.
Well, thank you for your presentation, again, uh, very, very important information that you shared today. Um, we look forward to hearing some more details on those questions that were brought up. Director Worley, thank you. And any further questions or comments? Seeing none, um, it is eight twenty-six, we're gonna take a five-minute break to come back at eight thirty-one. And we are back from our little break. Thank you, everyone that's online, and we'll try to be brief. Moving on to items C and R Agenda Resolution, Washington State Department of Commerce Award, Community Development Block Grant, and Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Late last year, in October, the city applied for and received COVID-2 monies from HUD, from block grant, through their COVID relief program. The CB2 federal dollars have a spending deadline of roughly this time next year, June 30th of 2023. We initially anticipated that business assistance grants would use up all this money, however, that didn't occur once other less restricted programs became available for that same purpose. So staff has brought forward this resolution as applying these funds to the Senior Meals on Wheels program, to use HUD's advice of trying to find a group that's schooled in the federal grant process, that has the ability to spend the funds on eligible activities, given the short deadline. So assuming council concurrence with that approach, we'll be bringing this resolution back for formal consideration next week.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments, Mayor Protamaloni?
Thank you, Mayor Baruston. Thank you, Director White. I just wanna bring up that I did exchange some emails with Director White, asking what else the, the funding could be used for, and we've, we know we've been looking for funding opportunities, especially in our downtown core, for a couple of different items. And, Director White, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll say what you said to me, or I'll try to summarize it, but feel free to step in if I'm misspeaking at all. Basically, it cannot be used for a loan program for, say, sprinklers downtown, that's not an eligible use for the CDBG funds. And so that was really, really just not gonna be able to happen on that. So is that, Director May?
Yes, no, that's correct.
All right.
Thank you.
Councilman Campos.
I guess I just, I'm gonna throw this question out there, I'm sure Director White's got an answer, but if anybody else is, was there anything else that we could have potentially used it for, and is it, if I'm understanding right, just a lack of applicants, or people who were ineligible for this particular funding?
And this has been a problem with all the COVID block grant monies, all, all three of them. The strings are very strenuous to tie together and to go through the program. When there were other sources of funds that just didn't have the same block grant rules, and the difficulty in putting forth the paperwork, people went to those. I was telling Councilman Maloney before the meeting, that we had a, a very large amount of money dedicated to utility assistance, nobody applied for, or very few, I'm sorry, very few people applied for it, there were simply too many other options for them to use.
Gotcha, okay. Well, seems like as good a program as any, and if the money's there, and it's gonna go away, otherwise, I'm okay with it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Councilman Serrano, Councilwoman Roach, do you have any questions or comments?
None here.
None as well.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we move on to item D on our agenda, Pasco Arts Culture Commission Grant Program, and for that, we have Ms. Angela Pashon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, I'm here to provide a brief verbal presentation on a pilot program through the Pasco Arts and Culture Commission to promote arts and cultural activities in the city of Pasco, with schedules and summer, all of that. You have me, the staff liaison, instead of a commissioner tonight. So, PAC is tasked with serving as a central commission to whom individuals and groups may bring their ideas with, in regards to arts and culture. Establish, additionally, they establish standards related to art and culture programs, and serve as a review panel for program applications. And as a means to further those tasks, PAC is re, sorry, recommending a pilot program for grant funding to support our community's rich artistic talents and organizations. The funding for this program would actually, for this initial pilot program, would be coming from STCU. And this was a one-time donation from STCU back in 2020. They were, had to put off their grand opening celebration, so what they chose to do is select three organizations within Pasco to actually provide a donation to help further activities. So, they provided $10,000, and PAC had asked, how can we use that, how can we use that to advance art and culture in our community? And what they decided to do was identify categories for funding, and those would include art projects, events, and advancing youth. And they have put a priority on funding new projects and events with no guarantee of, if future programs occur through this. No guarantee for funding for reoccurring annual events. For this pilot program, PAC plans to solicit applications in mid, late July, with a preview and selection in early or mid September, so we can get that funding out to these organizations pretty quickly. And with any new program, we expect some learning lessons, so any future long-term program would come with recommendations of those lessons learned. So this was really just to provide some, a brief presentation of what PAC is working on.
Perfect, thank you, Ms. Pashon. Do we have any questions, Councilman Campos?
Awesome. I have a follow-up, no questions on this, but I understand Mr. Mike Miller with Moon Security is trying to work on something else. This is separate from what STCU is doing, correct?
Correct.
Will we be getting any information about that in the future?
So, Mike Miller has engaged with a, a process as we're working on the public art policy as well, so I'm aware of the program he's working on, and he would be able to apply for funding for this as well. But this is separate and apart from his, what he's working on, but the Arts and Culture Commission is well aware of his efforts.
Gotcha, okay, sweet, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Councilman Serrano, Councilwoman Roach, do you have any questions or comments?
None here.
None as well.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we move on to item D on our agenda, Pasco Arts Culture Commission Grant Program, and for that, we have Ms. Angela Pashon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, I'm here to provide a brief verbal presentation on a pilot program through the Pasco Arts and Culture Commission to promote arts and cultural activities in the city of Pasco, with schedules and summer, all of that. You have me, the staff liaison, instead of a commissioner tonight. So, PAC is tasked with serving as a central commission to whom individuals and groups may bring their ideas with, in regards to arts and culture. Establish, additionally, they establish standards related to art and culture programs, and serve as a review panel for program applications. And as a means to further those tasks, PAC is re, sorry, recommending a pilot program for grant funding to support our community's rich artistic talents and organizations. The funding for this program would actually, for this initial pilot program, would be coming from STCU. And this was a one-time donation from STCU back in 2020. They were, had to put off their grand opening celebration, so what they chose to do is select three organizations within Pasco to actually provide a donation to help further activities. So, they provided $10,000, and PAC had asked, how can we use that, how can we use that to advance art and culture in our community? And what they decided to do was identify categories for funding, and those would include art projects, events, and advancing youth. And they have put a priority on funding new projects and events with no guarantee of, if future programs occur through this. No guarantee for funding for reoccurring annual events. For this pilot program, PAC plans to solicit applications in mid, late July, with a preview and selection in early or mid September, so we can get that funding out to these organizations pretty quickly. And with any new program, we expect some learning lessons, so any future long-term program would come with recommendations of those lessons learned. So this was really just to provide some, a brief presentation of what PAC is working on.
Perfect, thank you, Ms. Pashon. Do we have any questions, Councilman Campos?
Awesome. I have a follow-up, no questions on this, but I understand Mr. Mike Miller with Moon Security is trying to work on something else. This is separate from what STCU is doing, correct?
Correct.
Will we be getting any information about that in the future?
So, Mike Miller has engaged with a, a process as we're working on the public art policy as well, so I'm aware of the program he's working on, and he would be able to apply for funding for this as well. But this is separate and apart from his, what he's working on, but the Arts and Culture Commission is well aware of his efforts.
Gotcha, okay, sweet, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council, Mayor Protamaloni?
Thank you, Mayor Baruston, thank you, Ms. Pashon, for the presentation. Just briefly, when I'm looking at, you know, for example, murals, to my knowledge, we haven't yet established a new code that separates murals from the sign code, we haven't had yet an updated for that. So that makes me a little concerned that maybe, you know, murals may be premature until that's done. Obviously, we're, I think we're all, we've all talked about wanting to see a much more vibrant art culture in our downtown, especially. What does the timing look like that in relation to this pilot program?
So for murals, I would have to turn that to, to Director White, who's kind of working on, we're still working on the sign code, all of that. I will say, with our current code, murals are allowed in that 25%, so they can be done. So if there is an organization or an individual who would like to do a mural, they would be able to apply for this funding through the current code.
Right. I, I have not seen in other towns, a lot of murals that are that small of an area on the side of a building and such, and make much of a difference. So, maybe Director White, do you have any update on where our sign code might be?
The, our consulting team framework consulting is, excuse me, taking a, an addendum look at that with our downtown master plan, so they'll be providing a recommendation for murals, and we'll take that under, obviously, consideration once it's adopted. And then the, the code process is relatively simple, you just exempt it out of the sign code, it's pretty simple. So, their recommendation is forthcoming, and that'll soon be a draft that staff will have the ability to review in approximately two weeks.
Okay, so we're talking about, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna hold you to this date, I'm just making, I'm just looking, thinking of my mental calendar here. So we're talking about potentially having this updated by September timeframe, that we would be able to have both the recommendation from the consultants, and then implementation sign code sometime.
No, I think September would be too soon. The code itself would need to proceed through the planning commission, it has to be written, for starters, and then, I, you know, I, I guess, my guess is, it would be late in the, early in the fourth quarter, or late in the, very late in the third quarter.
All right. Ms. Pashon, the only other comment I'd have is that when I'm looking at events, I think definitely the, the thing I would recommend here is more of a need-based approach. Events, you know, I understand this is not intended for, for continual and annual funding of a specific event, but I think of events like Cinco de Mayo, Fiery Foods Festival and such, get a lot of private sponsorships, but there's a lot of smaller art events, art shows and such, which don't, aren't going to get, you know, a lot of private donations and sponsorship for. And so if there's any way that that can be part of their criteria for events, I think that would really make that money be much more impactful to the community than, you know, adding to a event that's already large and, and pretty well-funded. So I don't know if that was intended as part of their, their consideration there, but if they have a criteria there, then I think that'd be absolutely fantastic.
You, you found a point that I forgot to mention in here. So events that receive other city funding, so law, jail, and tax, those kind of events, we would look to probably exclude those for that reason, so that we can continue growing our arts and culture, so, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions or comments, Councilman Serrano, Councilwoman Roach?
Nope.
None here.
Thank you. And I do have one quick question. Thank you. For clarification, the 25% that you mentioned, that's 25% of the building or the wall that is intended for use?
It's the wall.
Okay, thank you. No further questions. Thank you, that was a quick presentation. We'll move on to item E, Resolution, Bonneville Power Land Use Agreement Supplement Number One for PWRF Project Phase One, Director Worley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I won't take that personally.
You should though.
I shouldn't. You're right. Good evening again. This item, thankfully for all of us, I get to turn over to our CIP manager, Maria Sarah, who will give us a presentation on it. She should be online and available, unfortunately, she's under my name. Yeah, so she's using my link to log into the meeting. She's the better Steve anyways.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, we can hear you.
Sorry if that was too loud. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. We are here to present one item regarding the Bonneville Power Administration Agreement, and this is an amendment to the existing agreement. We are looking at crossing the existing 100-foot easement, which extends from east Franklin County to, towards the northwest, and crossing the Columbia River. The layout and alignment of this easement really makes it impossible for us to extend the utilities proposed as part of our Phase One PWRF improvements, without crossing at some point this easement. So we have coordinated with BP, BPA, and we have a draft agreement in front of you, with some noted edits. The agreement does not cost any money, and the conditions included in that agreement were known at the time we prepare our contract documents, so all those conditions have been incorporated in our contract documents. As you may remember, we, you, no, we, you awarded the contract last, last week for this work. And at this time, we are looking for your approval to enter this amendment to this agreement with Bonneville Power, as I may have not mentioned, because I may have missed it, that with our previous agreement with BPA, accounted for some wastewater lines that we had before, installed a few years ago. And right now, what we're proposing to install, as you may remember, is water, power, fiber, and wastewater lines. And with that, you may have some questions that I would be glad to answer.
Thank you for that. Quick presentation, sorry, I was out on speaker. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Councilman Serrano or Councilwoman Roach, do you have any questions?
No, Ms. Mayor.
I do not.
Perfect, thank you. Director Worley, I hope you did not take offense on your previous presentations, they were very thorough, and we appreciate the information. It sounds like we don't have any questions on this particular presentation, thank you. And we'll move forward with seeing that on our next agenda. And with that, we'll move on to item six, miscellaneous council discussion. So, we'll turn it over to City Manager Dave, and then we'll come back to you, Councilman Campos.
I just have actually one really quick item, it's kind of a fun item. So tonight is drums along the Columbia at Edgar Brown Stadium, and so, those of you that may not know that, it's a drum and bugle corps competition from across the west. And Pasco being kind of a mecca for these types of activities, our community often has the opportunity to demonstrate some hospitality. This afternoon, one of the drum corps groups out of the state of Wyoming lost their practice field, it got double booked. Our staff was made aware of it, I think we have a picture of it, John. Staff was able to make aware of it, they helped by making available Highland Park to the team, which consists of about 150 students and about 20 instructors, so we had a lot of activity at Highland Park this afternoon. That group will be heading to Boise for an event tomorrow, but wanted to extend nice work to city staff in helping this group that came so far to perform and entertain in Pasco, so, just kind of a fun thing.
Perfect, thank you for sharing that. I did see the announcement on Facebook, and was said that we were going to miss it, because we're coming here to the meeting.
It goes till 11.
Oh, till 11, wow, okay, so I just missed it.
If you're not too tired after this meeting.
Thank you.
Given that's all of like, a block and a half from my house, I will be aware of it whether I'm attending or not, but my wife is actually attending, so she was, she was excited that we had a special meeting early, so she could watch the special meeting before the drums started, so.
Thank you. Councilman Campos.
Again, congratulations to new Councilmember Brown. I wanted to go back and revisit, do we, it sounds like councils in agreement on having a small pseudo-retreat. Do we wanna, are you planning on spearheading that, Mr. Zabel, or does that look like?
Yeah, that, that's my understanding, and I'm assuming we want to get probably into September timeframe, out of the summer vacation, and kids are back in school, or how does council want to handle it?
For me personally, that would sound good, just because this summer is a little busy with other meetings and other retreats, so just to be sure that we're gonna be present.
I'm not married to any idea, again, this is opportunity for the rest of us to discuss in an open forum, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
Personally, I'd rather have it sooner rather than later, because there's a lot we, we've been talking about, and the fact that we've had executive sessions almost every single evening has really limited our ability to have conversations as a team. So, we had a retreat, I would, I would look forward to having one soon, sooner than that, if at all possible, but I certainly respect that other people have other, other obligations as well, for sure.
Councilman Serrano, Councilwoman Roach, do you have any questions or comments on that?
Nope, I'm open to that idea as well.
Yeah, I know I won't be available till sometime in September.
Okay.
September would work better for me, I'm writing to Sturgis in a couple of weeks, so.
Well.
But no tattoos.
But we'll do a doodle poll on a couple of different dates and try to nail something down.
Sounds good, perfect. Thank you. And with that, we move on to item seven. And I last saw executive session, I last saw an email that there's no need for an executive session.
No need this evening.
Perfect, yes, that's what we want to hear. With that, we move on to item eight, adjournment, and it is now 8:51, and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.